Education meeting. I'm Eric Davis, Chair of the Board, and I call this meeting to order. Welcome to all Board members and advisors, staff, onsite visitors, online listeners, and Twitter followers. And remember, you can follow the North Carolina State Board of Education on Twitter at EDStateBoard underscore NC. Also remind the audience and those listening that this body meets monthly with its official meeting scheduled for the first Thursday of the month, which is today. Discussion of agenda items are typically held on Wednesday prior to the official meeting day, which is what we did yesterday. And I remind our onsite visitors and online listeners that you can follow our meeting online and see all of our materials by going to SBEMeetings at www.ncPublicSchools.org. Board members, you're reminded that it's our duty to avoid conflicts of interest and the appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of this board. Does any member of the board know of any conflict of interest or any appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before us at this meeting? If so, please state them for the record. If during the meeting you become aware of an actual or apparent conflict of interest, please bring the matter to the attention of the Chair, then it be your duty to abstain from participating in discussion on the matter and from voting on the matter. At this time, I call on my colleague, Mr. John Blackburn, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
Thank you, Mr. Blackburn. We now come to our special recognitions, a time on our agenda when we recognize significant awards, proclamations, resolutions, and those who make a significant difference in the lives of our public school students we serve each day. And we'll begin by recognizing and thanking our local superintendents who are in attendance today. If you're a local superintendent leading one of our districts, would you please stand so we can recognize you? We so appreciate your dedication to our students and your communities, and we're glad to be your partners in this endeavor. At this time, I'll turn to Dr. Petrie Martin to recognize and welcome our new Local Board of Education Advisor. Dr. Petrie Martin.
Good morning to our State Board, our State Superintendent, and all those assembled. It is an honor to present to you today Mr. Henry Mercer, who is Vice Chair of the Wilson County School Board. He was first elected in December of 2004, and he is the District Four Representative serving schools such as the Wilson Early College and the Wilson Academy of Applied Technology. He is also the Raleigh Dingman Award winner, which is the highest honor bestowed on a North Carolina School Board member. He also has been named with additional honors. One such will be the Local School Board Advisor to the North Carolina State Board of Education. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Henry Mercer. And at this time, Mr. Mercer, you will go up and take your official photograph with the State Board and our State Superintendent and the advisors. So we can have two rows, two rows. Yep. And one, two, and three, one more, one, two, and three.
comments to our discussion yesterday, and we look forward to working with you. And we'd also like to extend a warm happy birthday to you today.
Well, I thank you. (Applause) Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Thank you so much. Been serenaded now by the best, I suppose. And I don't mind jumping in, but I don't mind if I'm covering territory that's been covered. Just shush, and I'll get quiet.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Next on our agenda for recognitions is our state's success at the 2022 National FFA Convention. And with this, I'll turn to Joshua Ledso, our State FFA Advisor. Joshua.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Davis, Superintendent Truitt, Board members. It's an honor to be here today and represent FFA across North Carolina. Agricultural education exists to prepare young people to go into the state's number-one industry, and that's agriculture, and go into production agriculture in the 254 careers that support production agriculture in our state. We have over 580 agriculture teachers and 355 programs in North Carolina who reach over 72,000 students who are interested in our state's number-one industry, agriculture. Our whole mission is to create that experience for them, to be that talent pipeline, then to provide experiences that forever shape their leadership and personal development. And I'm proud to be a part of that and work with a great team that delivers those life-changing experiences to students. We did have a successful National FFA Convention from North Carolina. We have several of those folks here today. As I call your names, students and teachers, I'd ask you to come join us here on the side, and then we'll get a picture shortly, right, Ms. Maria? So thank you very much. So with us here today from the Lumberton FFA Chapter, they represented us in the National Chapter Award. So that recognizes chapters from across the nation and the work that they do in three different areas. Lumberton was recognized in the Building Communities as the Best Chapter in the nation with their program. Representing us here today, yes. Representing us here today is Cameron McKinnis, Belle Merlot, and their advisor, Candace Grimsley. All right. Now, I'm not finished with Lumberton either. As the Best Chapter in the state of North Carolina, they were recognized back at our state convention in June. They were given the opportunity to do the Hall of States. That's where we can educate folks from across the nation about agriculture in our respective states. So Lumberton did the entire Hall of States display focused on sweet potatoes, and, yeah, which, you know, is a pretty big number-one, North Carolina's number-one in sweet potatoes, right? So that presentation that they did, the booth that they created, landed them first place in the National FFA Hall of States. So with us here, Ivy Noli, Micah Locklear, and their advisor, Lee Pittman. So there's our Lumberton FFA Chapter. Freshmen, introductory students in agricultural education in an FFA learn the five paragraphs of the FFA Creed. It's a statement of what we believe as FFA members. And so there's an event where students can display their ability to recite that creed and answer questions. And then we're very fortunate, Ms. Rachel Noble from the South Lenore FFA Chapter went through all those rounds. Ms. Bracy and I watched her in the finals, and she nailed it. And she was the National FFA winner in our creed speaking event. With her today is Margot Harper, her agriculture teacher. This next group, they did promotion before national convention, during, and now after national convention. It's a talented group of young men from Avery County. They participated in the National Talent Event. So they were at venues all across the national convention, which, by the way, there's like 69,500 people at the national convention, right? It's kind of a big deal. So they're at venues all across Indianapolis. And at the end, there's a big talent show. And right there in the main arena, the Boone and Church Group, fellas, are y'all there? There they are already. Boone and Church performed in the big stage at national convention and placed first in the National FFA Talent Event, and they can pick and grin, and they do it very well. So gentlemen, we have Jackson Boone, Walker Boone, Ethan Church, and Eli Church. Their two advisors, Dwayne Craigie and Gretchen Blackburn. And I'm so thankful their parents are here with us. If I could just ask y'all to stand.
Oh, yeah.
They did a great job representing our state. Unable to join us today, unfortunately, because he is under the weather, Joshua Shaver from West Rowan was a National Proficiency Award winner for his Forest Products and Forest Products Proficiency Award. So we're very proud of Joshua and wish him speedy recovery to feel better. And then also, we're very fortunate, we had a National FFA Officer elected from North Carolina, the first time in 26 years that we've had a National Officer, McKenna Clifton. She was a state officer last year, and then, two years ago, excuse me. And then she is a student at NC State. She's originally from West Rowan High School. Her advisors unable to be here today, but Tori Cardia, Matt Owen, Alex Silliman, Madeline Wilhyn, and Jason Chester. So McKenna right now is in Indianapolis preparing to go all over the nation to speak and do workshops. So she sends her best and wishes that she could be here. So we're very proud of our National FFA Officer. She's our Southern Region Vice President. I would like to mention too, Mr. Chairman, that our FFA alumni on the state level is recognized as the best alumni in the southeastern region. And then, if I could ask Destiny Wilson, Destiny is one of our State FFA Officers, we're very proud of the work of our local agriculture teachers and our members. North Carolina was recognized with the second-largest Membership Growth Award this year. We now have over 32,000 FFA members, 32,597, but who's counting, right? To be exact. That makes us, just so you know, how does that compare? North Carolina is the fourth-largest FFA Association in the nation behind Texas, California, and Georgia. So I'm very proud of the work of our agriculture teachers and our students and the growth that we are seeing in FFA across our state. Thank you for the opportunity to share. And again, we're awfully proud of our young people and our teachers across the state and the work that they're doing. Thank you for the opportunity to share.
(Applause) Okay, Vice Chair Duncan and Mr. McKinnon, I'm going to need everybody in the back come over this way just a little bit. Yeah, there you go. Vice Chair Duncan, can you come over here just a little bit? There, good. There you go.
Always out.
And one, two, and three, one more, one, two, and three.
One more, one, two.
Keep Dr. Green and Mr. McKinnon, if you could come over this way just a little bit. There we go. And one, two, and three, one more, and one, two, and three. And one, two, and three, one more, and one, two, and three. Oh, very nice. And one, two, and three, one more, and one, two, and three. go. Yep. And one, two, and three, one more, and one, two, and three. Oh, very nice. And one, two, and three, one more, and one, two, and three. Here's to Avery.
Ms. McKinnis, are you going to come off?
Yep.
You've got to be here. I'll be right here.
Take over just a little bit this way. Yep, there we go. Good. And one, two, and three, and one more, one, two, and three.
This one would trade.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to mention while the FFAers are here, they're also highly associated with 4H. And we have a great 4H camp down in Terrell County in eastern North Carolina. And for any of you who are within earshot of what I'm saying, if you ever want to have a conference in a beautiful place at a low cost, it's the 4H camp in Terrell County. It's right on the Albemarle Sound. They have kitchen facilities, conference facilities, and it's just a great place to retreat to. And just to remind you, we have high schools in North Carolina that have more population than Terrell County has. So it helps their school system when we go there and generate sales tax revenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Superintendent.
Yeah, Carmen Bracy just kind of went around the corner, but I do want to recognize her. She is, there she is. Carmen Bracy is the State FFA Director. And I also, just as a point of personal privilege, want to say that many of you know that I taught for three years in Johnston County at West Johnston High School, where Carmen was a student of mine. And it was really, you know, I went to high school in a city, and I've taught a lot of places, but that was my first time teaching in a rural community. And it was the Ag program at West Johnston that really introduced me to the power of career and technical education. And Carmen's been, for two years have you been the State FFA? How long have you been the?
Yes, this is starting my third year.
Yes. And I was just so excited when I saw that she comes from a long line of educators and Ag teachers. And her mom was the Career and Technical Education Director here at DPI, now in Wake County. And just thank you for your dedication to Ag education. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. We are, clearly, we are proud of all of our students, but particularly this morning, we're proud of our FFA students and these particular champions of North Carolina. It just goes to show that good things grow in North Carolina in all the sorts of ways. We're proud of them. So we have another very special recognition, the 2023 Association for Career and Technical Education Teacher/Educator of the Year. And with that, I'll turn to our Director, Trey Mipe.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, and I just want to take a very quick second to say, this is the type of stuff I get to do every single day. I'm a slightly competitive person, so when I hear things like national winners, national officers, and we have such great representation like we have here, it just reminds me of why we get up every morning and do the job that we do. So first off, I just want to say thank you all for trusting me with this role. And I know Carmen has stepped out, but thank you to Joanne Honeycutt, who was a great mentor of mine for seven years while she was in this agency and really primed me to be in this role. So I don't want this to be about me, but I do want to say thank you all for being here this morning, and thank you so much for allowing us to recognize one of our CTE family today. A couple of quick notes about Lindsay. She was not planning on being a teacher. She did find the passion for serving both youth and adults. She currently serves on her CTE District Leadership Team as the CTE Curriculum and Instructional Management Coordinator for Alamance Burlington School System. In her role, she provides programmatic training for CTE teachers, which is aligned to district professional development initiatives. Prior to her work as a CIMC, Lindsay was a District Special Populations Coordinator, as well as both a CDC Career Development Coordinator and a Business Education Teacher for Hugh M. Cummings High School in Burlington. So a lot of different roles with a very wide variety of things that you do in a school. Lindsay was recently awarded one of the ACTE Excellence Awards, which promotes excellence in career and technical education. ACTE recognizes those individuals who have made extraordinary contributions to CTE, programs that exemplify the highest standards, and organizations that have conducted activities to promote and expand CTE programs. Award winners serve as inspirational leaders to ACTE as they embody the core values of serving their students, their peers, and other professionals, and being committed to CTE. The Teacher/Educator of the Year Award recognizes teacher educators who have demonstrated innovation in teacher education, leadership in improving CTE, and a strong commitment to preparing teachers to deliver high-quality CTE programs, which are so valuable to our local communities. It is my honor today to present Lindsay Chris, the National ACTE Region Two Teacher/Educator of the Year Award winner. Lindsay?
I didn't know I'd have to speak this morning, but first of all, thank you for everybody in this room, because without what you do and what our CTE folks do, we can't do what we do with the kids. Yeah, I was an accidental educator and fell in love with it. And I love what I do every day and getting to impact as many students and as many teachers as possible. It's a dream job for me. And so getting up every morning is very easy to go to work. But thank you for these folks especially. Their support is phenomenal to our local district, and it's just really nice to have that support here. Thank you.
Ms. McKinnis, if I could, you stand right here. And then if I could get everybody to take two steps to the right, move down, two steps to the right. Yep. Okay. And one, two, and three, one more, one, two, and three.
Congratulations.
And now we have the, our next presentation is a special presentation from our State Treasurer. Mr. Treasurer.
Good morning, everyone. As you know, one of our responsibilities at the Treasurer's Office is not only to manage the assets of those that teach, protect, and serve, both on the pension and the healthcare side, but we have a small division that has a million dollars, billion dollars sitting in it called NCCash.com. So we've been successful this year in paying out $110 million out of NCCash.com. A couple of Board members have said that they found money at NCCash.com. So as we were scrubbing the rolls in the second week of December, we found a check on behalf of the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction that we'll be presenting to the Superintendent and the Chairman. And this is $518,000 that was sitting at NCCash.com. And I'll explain how it got there in just a moment. will find the right place to put it. And so let me explain how it got there. It's kind of complicated, but occasionally, insurance companies and savings and loans, they de-mutualize. They de-mutualize, which means they become, go from being a member-owned entity to a stock-owned entity. Anytime anything de-mutualizes, that means their stock issued to policyholders or depositors. And this was the result of prudential insurance company de-mutualizing, becoming a stock-owned company. So there are a lot of prudential NC Cash entries at the State Treasurer's Office, because a lot of people perceive stock and things that they didn't know they were entitled to. So for all of you who are listening, you should always go to NCCash.com.
Right now.
After the Board meeting. One in every crowd. And you should go there and check your name, your maiden name, kids' names, parents' names. I think Lindsay's already left, but we partnered with a Maverick Radio over in Burlington. Cummings High School just performed at the Sugar Bowl on December 28th. Their band did. They had $250.78 sitting at NCCash.com. So go there and check your name, maiden, kids, parents, Little League Baseball team. So go there and check your name, maiden, kids, parents, Little League baseball team, your church. There's a million dollars that belongs to churches and even your business name. So thank you for giving me an opportunity to present this and congratulations. You need to sign the bottom of this to show that you got received. And I have NCcash cards for you, but I'd like to take one to look up their name later.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. We'll entertain that type of presentation any day you want to give it. Thank you very much. And now for our final recognition, we have a very special one, and that is to recognize a dear friend and longtime colleague of ours, Dr. Robert Taylor, who has his last regularly-scheduled board meeting with us today. Dr. Taylor has served many years as an education leader in our state at the school, district, and now state level, most recently as a Deputy Superintendent here on the Superintendent staff. He's now headed back home to Mississippi to serve as their state superintendent. And Dr. Taylor, we can all, we will miss you. We so appreciate the impact you've had on our students and teachers and principals and educators, and we can sympathize with you about going home. Going home is always a great thing, but we want you to know you always have a home in North Carolina. So would you join me in recognizing Dr. Robert Taylor?
So before you get the podium, Rob, I have a minute with you. Some of you may not know that one of the things that Rob and I have in common is that we are both military spouses. Rob's wife is a Colonel in the Army. And like me, his spouse has taken him to lots of different places. And if you have never been married to someone in the military or been a part of a military family, it's hard to build a career when you are the spouse of someone who serves. And Rob, not only have you built an amazing career that you're going to now reach the pinnacle of, but you are an amazing human being. You are an incredible husband. You have brought three incredible children into this world. And you are a light in the lives of everyone who has the pleasure of knowing you. And personally, I cannot, I don't know what I'm going to do without you. You are such a calm and steady influence on me. I've known you for a long time. And I know that we will both be picking up the phone to call each other whenever needed, and I take great comfort in that, but I am going to miss you, my friend. Thank you so much for serving our state as you have.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll just take a minute or two. Thank you Superintendent Drew, Chair Davis, the Board, David Robertson, Treasury of Fall Well. What I can tell you is that I'm leaving home to go home, and I think that's the best position that you can be in. I thank everybody across this state for 30 years of experience as an educator. People know me, and one thing I always say to people is that I'm a school teacher, regardless of what position I hold, I'm a school teacher. And this, it is in my blood and it will never change. What I can tell you is that I've learned so much about the education of children in the state of North Carolina. And what I can say to everybody in this room and in the general assembly across this state is that while we may differ about how we get to the final goal of educating children, North Carolina is a beacon to this nation about how we educate children in the state. I had an hour and 45-minute interview that ended up being two hours and 30 minutes, and we spent 45 minutes talking about North Carolina and how we do things. I will say to people in this agency that I am able to hold this position because of my two-year tenure in this department. I shared with the State Board of Mississippi that before I got here, I really didn't know and understand how state government operates, but these two years has been the absolute piece of bringing together, of understanding how that relationship works. And I will let you all know that that is the experience and the knowledge that I will take to Mississippi and do my best to be successful in that position. And I'll say to everybody that works in this agency, they're some of the brightest people that I've had the opportunity to work with, and so let's continue to support them in the work that they do. And I certainly say to my colleagues in the field as superintendents, teachers, administrators, that we serve you. We serve you. And that is my goal when I go to Mississippi. I will end with Mississippi is reinvigorated. For the longest, we have been at the bottom as a state in all sorts of categories, but we've made tremendous strides in education, and they taste that. And success is something that's great, and they want that to continue. And I can tell you, there's no greater honor than being selected by your state to lead that effort. And so I will just go back and do everything that I've learned in North Carolina, in Mississippi, and I only ask that you guys, please answer the phone when I call. But Catherine, I can't say enough to you, both for the friendship and the opportunity to come to this department, because had I not had that opportunity, I wouldn't be doing what I'm doing now. And so she's known my aspiration all along, to go back home and be the chief executive. And a lot of people have that wish, but only 50 people get to do it. And I am deeply humbled and honored for that. So thank you Chair Davis for this opportunity to recognize me, and thank you all, and I'll do my best to represent you the best I know how. Thank you.
If you feel as strongly, you could run a motion to me not pay misretirement.
And one, two, and three. One more. One, two, and three. Congratulations.
Yes, thank you so much Chair Davis for giving me about a minute, maybe not even that long. This is a point of personal privilege, and it is related to Dr. Taylor. The region had the honor of having him in Region Four, my region, the State Board Region, for several years. I got to know him when he was Director of EC Programs in Clinton City Schools. And then later, he was, he had the opportunity, lucky for Bladen County, to service him Superintendent for a few years. And you can see Pembroke, the MSA program, on an annual basis worked in that county to, in institutes for assistant principals. And the one thing that the faculty, the MSA faculty, would always say after we left Bladen County at the end of one of our half-day sessions, back on campus, Dr. Charles Jenkins, Dr. Larry Maeve, Olivia Oxendine, we would always agree that he was not, he was an extraordinary superintendent. He was a, he was the kind of superintendent that was a teacher leader. And anytime he spoke to the assistant principals in the room, just a quiet came over the room and people listened to him. We listened to him, the faculty, Charles, Larry, myself, we paid attention to Dr. Taylor and the wisdom that he imparted to these wannabe principals, aspiring to be principals at that time they were serving as APs. I don't know that Robert knows this, but the phone call, I was in his district with three MSA faculty members doing one of our sessions, the morning I received a phone call saying that I had been appointed to the State Board of Education. And when the call came in, I recognized, I recognized the call on my cell, and I stepped out of the room and went in the hallway. I was speechless. And then I came back and I thought, do I say something? No, I should not say anything. And maybe at the end of the day, I may have shared it with my colleagues and maybe, maybe with you, Rob, I'm not sure, but I associate that opportunity with the other opportunity of having been, having the honor to work closely with you in that capacity as a faculty member at Pembroke and helping earlier future leaders in Bladen County. I'm going to miss you, Region Four is going to miss you, and my faculty, colleagues back at Pembroke are going to miss you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Oxenden.
Yeah, real quick. Mr. Chair, a lot of people wonder why Deion Sanders left Mississippi Jackson State. And I found out why he left in Colorado. Well, very few people, very few people know this, but you know, a superstar don't want another superstar in the territory. And Deion heard that Dr. Taylor was coming back. Very few people know that, like I just said, but I am convinced. Deion Sanders went to Colorado because he knew a superstar was coming back to Mississippi, and that superstar is Dr. Taylor. And two superstars can't be in the same town.
I can.
Go for it.
Rob, I will sign this check over to you if you stand.
Oh, wait a minute, I don't like him that much. Yeah, Mississippi's a big state, but it's not big enough. Got you. All right, let's take a break until 10:00. Let's see. Yes, until 10 o'clock. We're on break.[1410.13]
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Davis. Wonderful to be here with all of you today. And I think as the PowerPoint is coming up, I am incredibly excited to, as, as Dr. Ryan indicated yesterday, to share some most recent data with you around our teachers literacy efforts in our state. So I'll, I'll just start by saying that, of course, Amplify is our K-3 reading diagnostic partner for the entire state. This was one of the changes that was made in the Excellent Public Schools Act, that we would have one diagnostic vendor instead of multiple, which gives us a better way to compare our, our students across the state, more apples-to-apples comparison. Assessments are given at K-3 for this diagnostic reading data in the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and the end of the year. And so this is the third time I've come before the board with Amplify statewide K-3 data to share. I've provided middle-of-the-year from last year data, end-of-the-year over the summer, and now this is beginning-of-the-year data for assessments that students took in September of this school year. So what I'm going to be highlighting for you today is the growth that we're seeing at every grade level and growth from beginning of the year of 2021, '22 school year to the beginning of the year at the 2022, 2023 school year. So we feel like in looking at all of our K-3 reading diagnostic data, that we are finally confident to say that we feel like there's a post-pandemic rebound happening in early literacy in our state. I'm also going to show how we're closing gaps amongst our students because we're seeing improvement in all subgroups for students. Next slide, please. So just a snapshot of the number of students that we're talking about. 454,028 students were assessed in 2022, 2023. DIBELS 8 is the traditional assessment. You can see the vast majority of those 454,000 students took DIBELS 8 only. But we also have close to 4,000 students who are in, in a dual-language program or an immersion school. And so those 4,000 students took what's called Lectura, which is Amplify's Spanish-language immersion assessment. And then you can see that about 70, close to 7,500 students took both Lectura and DIBELS 8. And what's significant about, next slide, please, about the Lectura is that it's not a, it's not just an assessment that's been translated into Spanish. It is a Spanish-language assessment that assesses a child's bilingual literacy skills. So it's, this is a really amazing part of the suite of tools that Amplify offers that we're always considering how to expand use of. So next slide, and so I'm going to share some overall data trends right now. Next slide, and, and just to help those of you who are looking at the, able to see the charts that we're going to show, whenever you see green, that, the green bars represent national numbers for students who are on track. Shades of red are used when we talk about numbers of students who need intensive interventions nationally. And then whenever you see gray, that is always just, that's always our North Carolina students. So we're going to first look at national trends for beginning-of-year, which is the percentage of students who are on track, which means they're ready for core instruction. So the lighter shades of green and gray represent beginning-of-year data for '21, '22, and the darker shades of green and gray represent beginning-of-year data for this school year, this past September. And what these slides show is that we are outpacing the rest of the nation in our growth. So when, for example, we look at, I'm going to zoom in on mine so I can see better, when we look at first grade from last year's beginning-of-the-year to first grade, to, from first graders last year and first graders this year at the beginning-of-the-year, we're seeing a 10% gain. When we look at first graders last year who are second graders this year, we see a gain. And the major takeaway from this slide is that the percentage of students who are on track in all grades, K through 3, performing at or above benchmark is higher this year than it was last year. And in first grade, it's 10 percentage points higher, which is very significant. Then in the next slide, this is where we want to see decreases. So this, as I said, the red represents national numbers for students who are at risk of needing intensive interventions, which means that if not served appropriately, these students will become, will be non-proficient readers by the time they start fourth grade. So we see here that at, we, we are decreasing the number of students who are coming in well below. And that if you look, let's see, if you look, for example, at first grade, you see that last year, 44% of students needed intensive interventions or were at risk for needing intensive interventions. But this year, only 32% needed that in first grade. Then when we disaggregate this data, next slide, please, we see that white students, black students, and Hispanic students all had the same percentage rate of growth, which was 6% for North Carolina students, which is greater than the growth that these groups saw when we compare North Carolina to the rest of the nation. So I'll just give you a minute to look at that. So of course, as you can see, we're, we're not finished. But instead of the trend being flat or going down, it's actually increasing quite significantly. Then the next slide shows us, again, the red. We, here we want to see significant decreases. And we see, again, that white students, Asian students, black students, and Hispanic students are all seeing a reduction of students who are at risk of needing intensive intervention. So if, if we look, next slide, please, more closely at year-over-year trends, the top bar graph horizontally represents the 2021, '22 school year, and the bottom bar graph represents the 2022, '23 school year. And when we convert these, these percentages, so red means that they were well below benchmark, yellow means below benchmark, green is at benchmark, and blue means above benchmark. So if we convert these percentages into number of students, what we see is that 28,000 and change students are below benchmark this year as compared to last year, and that 27,000, almost 28,000 students are more students are at or above benchmark this year than last year. And then finally, what this means is that this year, we have, we had 5,000 fewer fourth graders started school with the label "Reading retained" than the year before, which is which is an incredible feat for our teachers. This is, we talk frequently about the heavy lift that the letters, excuse me, the letters' professional development has been for our teachers. And I think that it's safe to make a couple of conclusions. The first one is that our students are doing better. They're, they're doing much better. We still have more work to do. And we're not even, I mean, we, our, we've provided the professional development to 44,000 teachers to date. Not all teachers are finished because we had to stagger the, the professional development start dates. But we know that our teachers have worked incredibly hard to take in this professional development, learn what they may not have known before, and implement that knowledge in the classroom with their students. And so I think all credit goes to our teachers for these incredible gains. And of course, I can't wait to see what our middle-of-year data shows next time.
Provided middle of the year from last year data, end of the year over the summer. And now this is beginning of the year data for assessments that students took in September of this school year. So what I'm going to be highlighting for you today is the growth that we're seeing at every grade level and growth from beginning of the year of 2021, 22 school year to the beginning of the year at the 2022, 2023 school year. So we feel like in looking at all of our K three reading diagnostic data, that we are finally confident to say that we feel like there's a post pandemic rebound happening in early literacy in our state. I'm also going to show how we're closing gaps amongst our students because we're seeing improvement in all subgroups for students. Next slide, please. So just a snapshot of the number of students that we're talking about. Four hundred and fifty-four thousand twenty-eight students were assessed in 2022, 2023. DIBELS eight is the traditional assessment. You can see the vast majority of those four hundred and fifty-four thousand students took DIBELS eight only. But we also have close to four thousand students who are in a dual language program or an immersion school. And so those four thousand students took what's called Lectura, which is Amplify's Spanish language immersion assessment. And then you can see that about seventy, close to seventy-five hundred students took both Lectura and DIBELS eight. And what's significant about, next slide, please, about the Lectura is that it's not a, it's not just an assessment that's been translated into Spanish. It is a Spanish language assessment that assesses a child's biliteracy skills. So it's, this is a really amazing part of the suite of tools that Amplify offers that we're always considering how to expand use of. So next slide. And so I'm going to share some overall data trends right now. Uh, next slide. And, and just to help those of you who are looking at the, able to see the charts that we're going to show, whenever you see green, that, the green bars represent national numbers for students who are on track. Shades of red are used when we talk about numbers of students who need intensive interventions nationally. And then whenever you see gray, that is always just, that's always our North Carolina students. So we're going to first look at national trends for beginning of year, which is the percentage of students who are on track, which means they're ready for core instruction. So the lighter shades of green and gray represent beginning of year data for 21, 22, and the darker shades of green and gray represent beginning of year data for this school year, this past September. And what these slides show is that we are outpacing the rest of the nation in our growth. So when, for example, we look at, I'm going to zoom in on mine so I can see better. When we look at first grade, from last year's beginning of the year to first grade, um, to, from first graders last year and first graders this year at the beginning of the year, we're seeing a 10% gain. When we look at first graders last year who are second graders this year, we see a gain. And the major takeaway from this slide is that the percentage of students who are on track in all grades, K through three, performing at or above benchmark is higher this year than it was last year. And in first grade, it's 10 percentage points higher, which is very significant. Then in the next slide, this is where we want to see decreases. So this, as I said, the red represents national numbers for students who are at risk of needing intensive interventions, which means that if not served appropriately, these students will become, will be non-proficient readers by the time they start fourth grade. So we see here that we, we are decreasing the number of students who are coming in well below. And that if you look, let's see. If you look, for example, at first grade, you see that last year, 44% of students needed intensive interventions or were at risk for needing intensive interventions. But this year, only 32% needed that in first grade. Then when we disaggregate this data. Next slide, please. We see that white students, black students, and Hispanic students all had the same percentage rate of growth, which was 6% for North Carolina students, which is greater than the growth that these groups saw when we compare North Carolina to the rest of the nation. So I'll just give you a minute to look at that. So of course, as you can see, we're, we're not finished. But instead of the trend being flat or going down, it's actually increasing quite significantly. Then the next slide shows us again the red. We, here we want to see significant decreases. And we see again that white students, Asian students, black students, and Hispanic students are all seeing a reduction of students who are at risk of needing intensive intervention. So if, if we look, next slide, please, more closely at year-over-year trends, the top bar graph horizontally represents the 2021, 22 school year, and the bottom bar graph represents the 2022, 23 school year. And when we convert these, these percentages, so red means that they were well below benchmark, yellow means below benchmark, green is at benchmark, and blue means above benchmark. So if we convert these percentages into number of students, what we see is that 28,000 and change students are below benchmark this year as compared to last year, and that 27,000, almost 28,000 students are, more students are at or above benchmark this year than last year. And then finally, what this means is that this year, we have, we had 5,000 fewer fourth graders started school with the label reading retained than the year before, which is, which is, is an incredible feat for our teachers. This is, we, we talk frequently about the heavy lift that the letters, excuse me, the letters professional development has been for our teachers. And I think that it's safe to make a couple of conclusions. The first one is that our students are doing better. They're, they're doing much better. We still have more work to do. And we're not even, I mean, we, our, our, we've provided the professional development to 44,000 teachers to date. Not all teachers are finished because we had to stagger the, the professional development start dates. But we know that our teachers have worked incredibly hard to take in this professional development, learn what they may not have known before, and implement that knowledge in the classroom with their students. And so I think all credit goes to our teachers for these incredible gains. And of course, I can't wait to see what our middle-of-year data shows next time. So moving on to more district highlights. In early December, I was able to go to Halifax County. This was just an absolutely amazing day through the capital needs-based grant program funded by the General Assembly and by the NC lottery, education lottery. Halifax County, the Department of Public Instruction awarded Halifax County $40 million for a new K eight school. And this school is going to replace a school called Eastman High School that was, that has, has not been in use for many years. And I go to a lot of groundbreakings, and usually there are maybe 20, 30 people there at most. There were hundreds of people at this groundbreaking, including the entire Halifax County Board of Education, county commissioners, of course Superintendent Eric Cunningham. And there were folks, not just from the community who had graduated from Eastman, but there were folks who came from out of state who had graduated from Eastman in 1975 there to celebrate their old building becoming a new K eight building. It was absolutely incredible. So very grateful to be a, a part of that work. Next, so we also in December had, had, it was Computer Science Week across the country. And for the second year in a row, we at the department have celebrated an hour of code. And we did so on Wednesday, December 7th. And for the first time though, we hosted, the first time in my administration, anyway, we hosted this hour of code at the department. And we had kindergarten through 12th graders from 13 different school districts and charter schools from across the state drive to DPI early in the morning and set up expositions and activities all throughout room 150, a room you are all familiar with, as well as upstairs on the balcony. And during, we, we, we got to, I got to watch kindergarteners coding little robots. I got to see 12th graders who had created incredible computer science and coding projects and everything in between. And during the expo, code.org, you can, they're, one of their vice presidents is pictured there with President Bill Carver from our community college system office and me. Code.org has announced a partnership that's going to provide professional development in computer science for 50 of our school districts, so that they will have a qualified computer science teacher at all of those high schools in those 50 districts. And they're doing that at no cost to the state. So we're really excited about this partnership, the opportunity to offer more professional development that we know our teachers want, especially in something like computer science, where it's hard to, to find teachers who are willing to be high school teachers, who have the ability to teach computer science. So very excited about this new partnership and more updates on that to come. Next, also in December, on the 8th, I traveled to Fayetteville to Alpha Academy, which is one of our charter schools in Cumberland County. And I had, back in the summer, they had asked me to read a passage from a book or read a, a chapter of a book as part of a video project that they were putting together with students that would be part of an initiative that they called Alpha Inspirational Reading Movement. In an effort to take a theme, and the theme was belonging, and take that theme and apply it to inspiring their students to read. And so I made the video in the summer, and then the, the video was finally finished, and it actually aired on WRL over the Christmas break. And I got to go and watch the video. And I, I tell you, you know, I went to an arts high school and was involved in big projects like this all the time. And I often say that my, my time, my, I learned time management skills in high school. And I learned how to follow through on my commitments in, when I was in high school. These, these kids were so excited about what they had produced. And I could just tell that they learned so much from really what was project-based learning in making this video. They were acting in the video, they were writing scripts, they were directing, they were working with the production company, they were helping to edit, they, they were part of the, the conceptual framework for how this video would, what different parts. There are lots of different vignettes about belonging. It was, it was just a very high-quality production, and the kids were incredibly proud to show all of the special guests that day, the, the video that, that they had made. And then finally, I've shared with you a couple of times now about Milken County presentations in our state. These are national awards that are also known as the Oscars of Teaching. These are awards given by the Milken Family Foundation for Education. And this year, an award was given to a teacher named Jessica Barnett. She is a seventh-year teacher at Rocky Point Elementary. What's always fun about these presentations, like this is my fourth one now, is that the teacher has absolutely no idea that this is coming, and neither do this, do his or her colleagues. And so usually it's just the principal and the superintendent that know. And I don't even find out until I get there who the teacher is. And they involve the students in giving the award to the teacher. And on this particular day, the faculty thought that they were gathering for, if you could go to the next slide, they thought that they were gathering for a Christmas concert from the students. And so we got to hear a Christmas concert, each grade sang a song. And then Mrs. Barnett was surprised with a $25,000 check that is hers to spend. And she becomes part of a cohort of teachers who have really just demonstrated excellence in their profession. So that was quite a way to finish out the week before our holiday break. So with that, that concludes my report, Mr. Chair, and I'm about to be answering questions.
Thank you, Superintendent. Questions or comments for my colleagues?
Mr. Chair, just to comment.
Treasurer?
We gave thousands of dollars to Rocky Pound, Rocky Point Elementary School last year out of NC cash for their PTA. So when we talk about NC cash, the PTAs, we just gave 26,000 to a high school where the PTA president put the money in McDonald's stock and nobody knew it 20 years ago. And that's what it turned into. So PTAs have money at NC cash also.
Thank you, Treasurer. Other comments, questions? Ms. Camnitz?
I just can't fail to comment on these beginning of year test, I mean scores. It's so exciting. And, you know, I think that we're going to, this will be maybe three times a year. When you bring this data to us, we can keep on celebrating it. The movement is in the right direction. It's so, so exciting. This investment is paying off.
Absolutely. And my prediction is that this will all culminate in higher NAEP scores for our fourth graders. That, of course, is where, where this is all headed. And of course, want to give a super big shout out to Dr. Ryan for her, her and her teams' work in, in the implementation of the professional development. Just absolutely, she is so dedicated to this work and cannot thank her enough.
It's been a monumental task.
It really has, yeah.
Any other comments?
Just a quick comment. And I do compliment you also, Auntie, Miss Dr. Ryan, on this really good news. And what I would, what I would like to see happen, I know that the numbers, the American Indian, I've got to make a better habit of this, getting my, I know the numbers of American Indian students are very small in the state, very, very small. But I would like to see, Superintendent, if you would, maybe in the near future, highlight the, take the Indians, American Indian student population and apply the same kind of statistics to their, their performance, the BOY, and also the other, the other assessments that are given in K three.
Yeah, we can, of course, the, it will depend on the N size. If Amplify can, can cut the data that way, we, I certainly agree that it's something that we need to know, and we will absolutely reach out to Amplify to see if we can get those numbers, and then if so, we'll, we'll report back.
And maybe get with Stacy on that.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other comments, we'll now turn to a review of our action and discussion agenda of yesterday, and we'll begin with the Student Learning and Achievement Committee led by Ms. Jill Camnitz. Ms. Camnitz?
Thank you, Chair Davis. Dr. Oxendine and I work together in, in this committee, in doing this committee work. And we had three items of new business yesterday. The first was our monthly report on the K-12 Science and Helpful Living Standards. They are operating on separate timelines. So first, the, the surveys on the draft, first draft of the science standards have been completed, and data is now being analyzed by the Office of Learning Recovery. That analysis will be provided to the Data Review Committee, which will then report to the Standards Writing Team by the end of this month to inform their edits and revisions. The Data Review Committee for Helpful Living continues to work on their report and recommendations, and the Standards Writing Team will meet for the first time in early February. So both efforts are on track. We got an update on a new partnership with the National Student Clearinghouse from Dr. Corn. It is going to provide us at the state level, our districts, our high schools with an incredibly rich source of data on post-secondary pathways. And this is thanks to funding from the General Assembly to give us access to this information. Examples of the kinds of, of information that this is going to provide to us is, includes the number of high school graduates who enroll in college and whether they persist and graduate, the number enrolled in two and four-year institutions, and the institutions that our students are most commonly attending. Each PSU will receive an annual student tracker report with statewide information available on the DPI website. DPI also plans a series of webinars in the, during, it's not the new year now, it's this year, to support the use of the data to facilitate best practices and spur innovation in our schools across the state. And that will include face-to-face sessions in each of our eight regions, so lots of outreach into how to use this data effectively. Finally, we had some information on the department's partnership with the Institution of Education Sciences, a study that we are, three-year study that we are funding, which assesses the long-term impacts of, of school extension programs on student re-engagement and learning recovery. The research is focused on three questions. How has the pandemic affected student learning, engagement, and progress through school? How are the student extension programs implemented? And what are the impacts of the programs on student learning, engagement, and progress? The data set that we focused on, well, the data set starts with the 2015, 2016 school year, but the most current data that we looked at yesterday were from the 2020, 21 school year. The findings were that the students had more absences and lower course grades. Excuse me. Let me think about how I've got this written here because I don't think this is correct. Students entering the 2021 summer programs had lower proficiency scores, more failed courses, and more chronic absences, which means that those summer programs that year were serving the students of highest need. Key findings from that school year were that students had more absences and lower course grades, more likely to be, I'm sorry, I keep reading the same sentence over and over. Slightly more than half of the elementary and middle school enrollees in the summer program attended at least 75% of the summer program days, which is a very high number. And about 25% of the elementary students and 40% of the middle school students increased at least a grade level of I-ready as a result of the summer programs. Summer programs were, enrollees were also less likely to repeat, repeat previously failed courses. Next year, we will get the data from the 2021, 22 school year added to this, this collection of data, and we will continue to look at the effectiveness of our summer programs and how it affects our students going forward. We had one discussion item, SLA one, which is a report to the General Assembly on Read to Achieve. Each LEA was required to submit a literacy intervention plan aligned with the science of reading, with intervention funds released after approval of this plan. All of our districts, all of our districts submitted the plan as required. Twelve plans were approved, and 103 were approved with recommendations. None were denied. And additionally, we have provided, the General Assembly provided funds for an early literacy specialist in each of our LEAs. At this point in time, 45 LEAs across the state have hired or are in the hiring process for these specialists, which will be, which will lead the early literacy efforts in each district. And the Office of Early Learning is continuing to work to develop a collaborative, sustainable coaching model for this particular program. We have two consent items. SLA two is a report to the General Assembly, statewide trends in student digital learning access. This report covers progress towards establishment of a digital learning dashboard as required by Session Law 115C 102.9. It is anticipated that the dashboard will be completed by August of 2023. Finally, SLA three, also a report to the General Assembly's School for Students with Visual and Hearing Impairments. Each year, North Carolina public schools must provide a consent for release of information form to parents, guardians, and custodians of students identified with these disabilities with a November 30th deadline. The consent authorizes the release of the information to the directors of our residential schools as part of their outreach to assure that guardians aware of, are aware of the services that they provide for those students. This report is due to the General Assembly before the window of responses closes, necessitating an incomplete report in November each year with a final report in January. This is the final report. And as I did yesterday, I bring this to everyone's attention because we would like to recommend that the, the General Assembly adjust the due date for this report so that we don't have to do the work twice and can just submit it when the data is complete. And that is the commission of my vote to the Student Learning and Achievement Committee.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Camnitz? Great. Next, we'll turn to the Education Innovation and Charter Schools Committee led by Ms. Amy White. Ms. White?
Good morning, Chair Davis. I'm Amy White. I do lead the Education Innovation and Charter School Committee along with Jill Camnitz. We had a great discussion yesterday. We have two items for action today on our agenda and two items for discussion. EICS one was a revisit of the 2022 accelerated charter school applications. Last month, in December, we had several schools before us for a vote, and two of those did not pass. Those two schools were American Leadership Academy in Monroe and Legacy Classical in Rockingham County. Questions that prompted the, the review by CSAB, State Charter Law, says that if schools don't pass the state board upon first review, it must be returned for the Charter School Advisory Board to have an additional opportunity to discuss, review, and, and put forth their recommendation, which they did. Two of the items that were of concern were addressed. One was the legal review of the contracts, and the Charter School Advisory Board did have the opportunity to have our legal team review both of those contracts. Another area of concern specifically related to American Leadership Monroe was the number of schools by the EMO being applied for, by the state. That entity agreed to withdraw a normal application school. It was ALA Garner, so they have removed that so that they can focus on this accelerated application. Those two schools are before us for approval today. Mr. Chair, I do note that the Lieutenant Governor has to recuse himself, or recused himself from the vote on ALA Monroe. So when we do vote for those two schools, if we could separate so that he would have the opportunity to vote on Legacy Classical?
Yes. Let the record reflect, Lieutenant Governor has recused himself from EICS one dealing with ALA Monroe. And we'll orchestrate the vote in that fashion.
Thank you very much. EICS two is a request from Aspire Trade High School to implement a weighted lottery. Charter School Advisory Board had the opportunity to review that, and, and with fidelity, Aspire Trade would like to increase its opportunity to serve disadvantaged students. And so we have that request before us for approval on action today. We had two discussion items. EICS three is the 2022 standard timeline charter school application recommendation. discussion items. EICS-3 is the 2022 Standard Timeline Charter School Application Recommendations. Yesterday, I just reminded the board that those applications came to the Charter School Advisory Board and the Office of Charter Schools in April of 2022. And that board and the Office of Charter Schools has reviewed those over the last seven months with interviews starting in September, October, November, December, where schools were, where their additional questions had the opportunity to be interviewed by the Charter School Advisory Board. Of those 16 original recommendations, four of those schools withdrew their application. Five were not recommended, and that left the Charter School Advisory Board with seven recommendations for approval. Those schools are Flat Rock Classical, Riverside Leadership, Three Movement Schools, Movement School West Charlotte, Movement School Northeast Charlotte, and Movement School Raleigh, Heritage Collegiate Leadership Academy, and Agape Achievement Academy. We had opportunities to discuss those yesterday. You have additional time to review all of the information that has been posted on eBoard, including the actual applications, discussion by the Charter School Advisory Board, and any impact statements that have been provided by the local LEA. If you have additional questions, I would encourage you to reach out to the Office of Charter Schools. Those will be back before us next month for action. We had one final item for discussion, and this was a request from West Triangle High School, request to change its managing nonprofit. There was an issue with a bond that was originally named by the original nonprofit. When the school realized in the replication of West Triangle High School that it needed to have a separate entity managing them, they contacted our legal department and created a separate new nonprofit. And so that is before us today for discussion. It'll be back for us tomorrow, next month, for a vote. Mr. Chair, that concludes our committee's agenda for this month.
Thank you, Ms. White. Any questions for Ms. White? Hearing none, we'll now move to the Help the Responsible Students team, led by Mr. Reginald Keenan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, yesterday we had covered items on the new business. The first one we talked about, Dr. Ensign presented, was the Help the Active Children Boss Report. She went into detail about the data to give you, inform you as what's been done to try to, again, get our children healthy. And of course, we've all seen reports, so we'll go through the data itself. And also, we had Ms. Suzanne Small to talk about the work of the whole child NC update, of course, deal with the non-academic barriers and what they're doing to try to, again, continue to help our children become healthier. And based on what was discussed, was given the overview of what's been done in relation to the whole school, community, whole child framework. And also, we were fortunate enough to have Ensign County Schools there yesterday. I think Ms., I can't remember, Ms. Tripp, I think it was, and others from Ensign County Schools came and told us how that particular framework was working in their counties and in this school. And again, it's a plus. And also presented yesterday was Dr. Charlene Wong from the HHS, and she talked about the Unified School Behavioral Health Strategic Plan. Basically, she reenriched what we already knew. There's a crisis for our children, their behavioral risk. There's many issues out there, that non-academic barriers that are affecting our children to be educated in the correct way, and it's a lot of work to be done. And she also talked about the different strategies that they thought were necessary, and also the funding that were required to support those strategies. And very quickly, the strategy that she talked about was statewide electronic help record system, the school-based telehealth pilot for behaviorally help, Project WARE Activate, school linkage to community resource networks, the school health advisory council, the SHAC support, and then help first aid. Those are the particular strategies, also the money that goes with it. And then, then lastly, we have the action item was for the day of approval, the Permanent Rule, which is 16NCAC 06e.0204, and Allison Schaefer presented that to us. And the committee notes, I think that is all in our particular committee.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan. Any questions for Mr. Keenan?
Yeah, I would add, the board has great interest in this Unified School Behavioral Health Strategic Plan, because it so closely aligns with our understanding of our students' needs, as you mentioned, Mr. Keenan, and hope that that plan will be adopted and fully supported. Okay. Next is the Special Committee on the North Carolina Pathways to Excellence for Teaching Professionals, share that leadership role, along with Ms. Camnitz and our superintendent. And yesterday, we received a report from our General Counsel on a review of, well, one, a sort of historical update of how we got to where we are now, and review of statutes that would need to be considered for modification in order for us to conduct pilots. And so that has brought us forward with additional information. We'll then be able to refer back to the General Counsel this item, once we have more specific recommendations from Pepsi on what the, how the pilots will be constituted. And so we'll have a further update from the General Counsel at that point in time. Anything to add, Ms. Schaefer?
Sir?
Okay. Thank you so much. Any questions or additional comments from colleagues? Okay. Next is the Education Standards, Educator Standards and Practice Team, led by Dr. Oxendine. Dr. Oxendine?
Thank you, Chair Davis. I am Olivia Oxendine, and I chair the ES&amp;P Committee of the Board, and joining me in that responsibility is Ms. Amy White. Yesterday, we had a very interesting discussion led by Dr. Tom Tamberlin on changes in LICN 001. This is where the general, the body of policy resides related to the general licensure requirements for our teachers in North Carolina. The impetus of these revisions, I have a couple of sources, recommendations from the field, wanting to improve, a desire to improve clarity around probably through four or five sections within LICN 001. To, also, the revisions have led to improve organizations of these policies. And to, probably more important, or equally important, is to bring our policies in LICN 001 into statutory alignment. And we recall that we spent quite a bit of time over the last four or five, maybe more than that, maybe a year, dealing with statutory alignment, or improving statutory alignment with respect to the principal licensure. So anytime we can improve statutory alignment, all thumbs are up for that. So that is one of the reasons for revisiting LICN 001. So there is now a separate section in the policy manual, devoted to the residency license, and that body is, begins with 1.60a to 1.60e. At one time, all things related to residency, the body of policy, I think, was in 1.20. There is also a good change in the out-of-state licensed individuals who come to North Carolina, and without effectiveness data shall be, this is the way it currently reads, shall be issued an IPL or unlimited license. At the end of three years, the teacher may be eligible for the CPL. The recommendation before the Board, and this recommendation is coming from Pepsi, the recommendation before the Board is to issue the CPL to the out-of-state teacher, holding an out-of-state license, upon completion of SBE Teacher Effectiveness Requirements, therefore removing that three-year period. In other words, as soon as the teacher meets all of the NC SBE requirements, then that teacher is eligible for the CPL. I think that's a big win, because we have, I can't imagine the number of out-of-state teachers we have in North Carolina. If we can relieve some of the burden on them being issued a license sooner than three years, that's a good thing. So that's a good recommendation coming from Pepsi. That will be for, as you know, this is a discussion item. We will load on that, all of this body that I'm presenting to you today next month. Also, for consideration before the Board, and I want to be sure I get this right, Section 1.60a, I'm going to read, pardon me for reading, but I want to be sure about this, so I'm going to do a little bit of reading. If an individual fails to renew the residency license for either the second or third year, the current resident's license will expire. Within three years of the effective date of the original residency license, a residency license may be reinstated at the request of the PSU if the following conditions are met, and those conditions are two, 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 and three are, let's see, are, two and three are these, to be enrolled in an EPP and to be employed by a PSU. The Pepsi has, is bringing that recommendation to us. However, according to Dr. Tamberlin, there is some concern in the field. I think what has happened in the field, that some districts have allowed, they have, they have renewed the residency license outside the three-year window. Everything must take place in terms of renewing the license within a three-year window. That's what the statute says. But over time, I suppose some confusion, and I don't understand the clarity around licensure, that has gotten off track. So now, the Pepsi would like, what I just read to you is what Pepsi is recommending. What Dr. Tamberlin suggested yesterday is that we reconsider, if we're willing to reconsider what Pepsi has recommended, therefore allowing the person, the teacher, who wishes to renew, second or third renewal, the residency license, that it, that it can occur outside the three-year window. So that is coming back to us for approval next month. But we need to be sure that we're either going to go with the Pepsi recommendation, or we're going to go with this exception. And the other area that we need to consider is, pardon me, I'm going to read again, relative to Section 160d, a residency license subsequent to a previous RL, meaning residency license, or lateral entry, the Board is asked to consider a one-year waiver applicable to 2022 and 2023 for individuals who were issued a residency license without meeting the NC SBE testing requirements. The teacher must satisfy the testing requirement by June 30, 2023. In other words, over time, applicants wishing to convert, subsequent to a previous RL or lateral entry, the Board is asked to consider a one-year waiver applicable to individuals who were issued a residency license without meeting the testing requirements. We are being asked to approve a waiver to allow that individual to hold, to maintain that license, but the, but the condition is the individual would have to meet the testing requirements by June 30, 2023. So it would be a one-year, the life of the waiver would be one year. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Oxendine. Any questions for Dr. Oxendine? Hearing none. Our next group is the Strategic Planning Team, led by Dr. James Ford. Dr. Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm James E. Ford. I share the responsibility of chairing the Strategic Planning Committee alongside Jill Camnitz. Yesterday, we heard from our Dr. Maria Petrie-Martin, who provided for us a summary of the Strategic Plan Goal Review that took place during our planning and work session in November of 2022. She provided detailed feedback that was captured from those discussions as we reviewed each of the goals associated, the three goals associated with the 2020-2025 Strategic Plan, particularly through the lens of data. Again, a lot of this had to do with the dashboard and ushering in the Phase Two of the work, and seeing if there was metrics data that was aligned to the objectives and the goals, and determining whether or not some of them needed to be adjusted. We did make clear that the goals themselves will remain the same, but entertained the possibility, potential of revising some of the objectives that were associated. They were put into different categories based upon the feedback or the availability of data. There was robust discussion, again, about the need to disaggregate, and whether disaggregating at the level required or desired articulated in the plan was a possibility. Most particularly, we talked about the creation of a DPI working group that would dig and burrow this work even further, taking the feedback that was associated with the conversation in the planning and work session, and continuing to iterate on that as we ushered into Phase Two of the Strategic Plan Dashboard that's associated with our articulated goals. And we did also raise questions and provide clarification for board members about, you know, the meaning of certain terms, certain concepts that were captured in plan, and continued to create a timeline for what that would look like through January. The DPI Working Group will organize all the input and come back with a draft in February to present another set of recommendations based upon the conversations that were had. And I do believe that that is it and concludes my report, unless there are any additions.
Thank you, Dr. Ford. Any questions for Dr. Ford? Okay, one item of relationships. So this, this item affects an action that we took in December on the Pathways to Excellence for Teaching Professionals, in that we ask our superintendent to perform an alignment review of the blueprint items from the pathways work to the strategic goals and objectives, along with Operation Polaris. Given that we need a little more time to do more work on those goals, instead of having the superintendent bring that alignment study back to us in February, I'd suggest we adjust that to March. Any questions on that adjustment? Okay. Then we'll move forward in that fashion. Okay. Next is our Government and Community Affairs Team, led by Mr. Wendell Hall. Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Along with Jill Camnitz, we chair the, and co-chair of the Committee of Committee of Affairs. Yesterday, we heard from Jamie Falkenberry, who went through the requests coming from the State Board, along with Department of Public Construction, on the long-term, long-term request going to the General Assembly that comes in, I think, in a couple of weeks, that will be entering again to deliberate on funding for this great state. We heard a lot of items that have been presented from the long-term request, and I'm not going to go over all those items, but we heard them yesterday. But I will highlight a few. One of the items that is on the long-term request, coming from the department and the Board, deals with coaching positions for preschoolers, and some of our more difficult schools, low-performing schools that we are experiencing, and chronically low-performing schools, to help them become better at what we are doing. And that is, of course, is guiding those schools on behalf of the students. We also had a, had a discussion yesterday, heard that social workers, the school nurse, is on the agenda, on the request line item this time. Also, from the, to the long, to the long session, let it be known that it's critical that our social workers, our school psychologists, and nurses be available to help some of our students who are having issues to deal with, I heard from my friend earlier, other than academic, the mental and social, emotional learning aspect. We also will be on the list of requests, deals with child nutrition, cocaine, while with child nutrition programs across the state, and promising practices. We're truly interested in getting those out on the table. So other districts, and other schools, and other states, like the state of Mississippi, the state of Mississippi might want to hear some of these great things that we're doing, with promising practices here, here in the state. With that being said, I'm not going to go through everything, but we heard it yesterday. But, Mr. Chairman, at your permission and appropriate time, I do have a motion to present the body for approval. Do it now?
Yeah, I think that's appropriate.
I will move in that direction. And you have to address a copy of the motion that will be voted on, and this is an action item, and I will read it for the record. I move that State Board of Education requests that the North Carolina General Assembly and the North Carolina Governor support the full implementation of the comprehensive plan. I move also that State Board of Education approve the items. I move also that State Board of Education approve the items with dollar amounts that were presented in the Government and Community Affairs Committee Agenda Item GCA-1, Hon January 4, 2023, entitled "The 2023 Legislative Request for the General Assembly Long Session." I also move that State Board of Education consider the following for approval once dollar amounts are provided. One, career paths and teacher licensure reform, the pilot phase. Two, EC funding folder. And three, new or revised district regional support models. Mr. Chairman, there's my motion before the group.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. Hall? Okay, hearing done, then this motion will become part of our action agenda to be voted on in a few minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And then last up is Business Operations led by Vice Chair Duncan. Vice Chair Duncan?
Well, we had our usual lengthy meeting yesterday. My name is Alan Duncan, along with Wendell Hall. We chair the Business Operations Committee. We had several items, and the first four are action on first read items. BizOp 1, it was approval of contracts for over $500,000. Our first report was on a contract with Capital Chevrolet provided by Kevin Harrison with our Transportation Services Section. You recall earlier, we approved a contract that would have been through Ford to purchase needed support vehicles for our districts around the state. And Ford was able to supply part of that contract that we ran into as everyone has supply chain shortage issues, and so there were not sufficient appropriate vehicles available. We were able to obtain sufficient appropriate vehicles from Chevrolet, Capital Chevrolet, and so have, seeking approval from the board with that modification. We will not get quite as many vehicles as we had hoped to get this year, but that will be taken into account as we get to next year. We worked with the districts with respect to allowing them to be able, they have, the ones who can maybe get one more year out of the vehicle they have, so that's, that's where we're going. Our second contract is the Presidio Network Solutions Renewal of the Run Zero Licenses. This was presented by Michael Ramsey. This is an extension of an existing contract, and it provides great information to the districts that's been extremely helpful in modernizing, if you will, the information they have on their systems, taking off things that no longer should be on there and locating things that perhaps should be included on the system that are not. So this is an update for the licensing to be able to continue to do that, and the request for this very strongly came from the field. Our third area is TeachNC. We have had, we have worked with TeachNC for several years in terms of helping in the most important task of recruitment of new educators, and it's transitioning where the department is taking even more direct oversight over it. So this item contemplates the necessary contractual relationships that need to be built as the department takes full ownership, if you will, of the leadership of this important program for developing and bringing in new great educators. Finally, we had Metometrics, which is Curtis Sonaman presented, and I should have said Dr. Jason Caldwell presented to us on TeachNC. Metometrics, Curtis Sonaman reported to us about this contract, which is a way to best assess the lexiles and quartiles and the various information that we get in a way that we can make meaningful sense of it from a testing and accountability standpoint. I'm hesitant to get into too much detail on all of this contract. It's quite technical in nature, but I think Curtis did a good job of explaining, and I believe the superintendent added and supplemented that before yesterday. So that's BizOp 1. BizOp 2 is a State Board Policy Amendment to the North Carolina Public Schools Allotment Policy, Smart Schools Bus Safety Program, and 21st Century Community Learning Centers Program. These are two unrelated policies. This is more like a miscellaneous updating policies. The first one, and this was reported on by John Keifer, who does an excellent job in reviewing our policies and making sure they're updated. On the Smart School Bus Safety Program, there have been a lot of changes made to legislation and otherwise recently and just updating, if you will, things that need to be done. So John described the basic points of those revisions. He did not go through the 480 pages of the policy with every revision, but he described what the revisions were doing, the policy in there. And I, again, appreciate the fact that we are being able to stay with our policies current by way of that kind of work, going back and reviewing them and making those issues right. With respect to the 21st Century Community Learning Centers Program, that was much easier. There was a typo that had a $400,000 limit on the grant, and in fact, it's $500,000. So if I'm voting for this, we are simply approving that correction, if you will, of the typographical error that occurred. On, finally, on BizOp, not finally, on BizOp 3, an action on first read, we have Jennifer Bennet, who reported to us on the North Carolina General Assembly Required Full-Time Equivalent Student Calculations 21-22 School Year. And she reported on what that looks like. I think you all may vividly recall, the actual report's 9,500 pages long in a very granulated format, computer readout format. She reported in general and showed us what it looked like, if you will, for certain counties so that everyone had a sense of knowing exactly what it looked like. This item is one that's been discussed a lot by the board previously, not this report, but the Full-Time Equivalent calculation, which was ultimately adopted by the board approximately a year ago, many months ago at least. And that's a report that's required by the General Assembly on an annual basis, and it's a report provided by DPI, so the board in this motion will be asked to receive this report as opposed to approving this report, just to be clear on that. And then finally, on BizOp 4, we got an excellent report from Dr. Vanessa Renn and Ray Zeiss from the Friity Institute in terms of the North Carolina General Assembly Required Report on School Connectivity Initiative. Dr. Renn and Ray Zeiss, Mr. Rice, reported appropriately that they're very proud of the work that's been done. North Carolina's been a leader in school connectivity, being the first state to be fully connected, I believe, in 2016-17 timeframe, and the updating of that has continued. And one of the things I think the board learned from that report is the benefit of E-Rate. E-Rate has saved a tremendous amount of money for the state in this area. One of the areas E-Rate does not yet cover is cybersecurity, and of course, for anyone who works in a district and certainly here at the state, we're all acutely aware of the fact that cybersecurity is very important these days. Unfortunately, we've had some of our governmental entities that have been subject to cybersecurity attacks at different times. So there's an extensive effort being made to lobby that E-Rate should also be able to cover necessary investments for cybersecurity for our system, and that was a very good report. There were two areas that we were being asked to look at as we go forward. One of them is how we deal with any reversions that relate to cybersecurity and that we seek very strongly, because of the timing of when these things follow, it's not a great timing with, with when reversions occur, and so that's something that we need to be very aware of. The second thing is where a great deal of devices purchased with the federal funding with the federal funding that was received. And so a lot of devices were purchased for students in, that's in the 2025-2026 timeframe will become likely obsolete. So we may be looking at a significant replacement issue as well as upkeep issue in that timeframe. And so we were asked to come, to think about, and we've asked the reporters to come back and provide further information to us on both these items, but to be planning ahead and not be caught off guard that in 2025-2026, it is reasonable to assume that we will be dealing with a lot of concerns about how we not just replace these items, but make sure we have full connectivity with these items. So that's, that's some challenges ahead. It was a very, I thought, a very helpful report for everybody in terms of looking at the technology issues and appreciate the work that was done on it. So in sum, we'd be reporting to approve, we would be asked to approve BizOp 1 on action on first read of the contracts that have been brought forward, approve the policy amendments in BizOp 2, accept the report in BizOp 3, and BizOp 4 report, we would be approving that report that we received in BizOp 4. We have one further action item now on first read, that's the Local School Administration Unit Teacher Compensation Models and Advanced Teaching Roles. Additional funding, we have dealt with this now for a couple of meetings in some detail, and we had approximately $1.4 million, we had committed a little over $1 million on one of the options. There were a number of other people, or excuse me, a number of other area, school systems that had applied for additional funding, and it was one that was a holdover, that had not applied but would be a holdover. So a couple of things happened. The first thing was, in a very Solomon-like manner, Dr. Tomberlin proposed that we divide for all the schools that applied the remaining $300,000 equally, which results in approximately a $37,000, going off the top of my head, but approximately $37,000 per school district for that request. In addition, it would have been in effort for the holdover to pay a $5,000 payment, but in moving some of the seat cushions around on the sofa, there was an additional $49,000 that occurred, and that actually was because of some accounting with respect to what had been used and not used. And so I use that only euphemistically, but it's a happy moment when you do find some additional funding, and Treasurer Caldwell has illustrated that for us already today. So that allows that holdover district to get an additional $49,000 for the continuing year, and the board will be asked to go ahead and approve that approach for how we disperse the remaining funds for those, for that initiative. BizOp 6 is a consent item, which we devoting on to approve, school busing, riding, equivalent system approval for the Guilford County Schools. We also had the opportunity to review the executed contract report and the blank planned contract report on which there were no questions this time, and we got an update, we received an update of materials about the monthly budget report and status. And that concludes our report.
Thank you. Any questions for Vice Chair Duncan? Ms. White?
Not a question, but a comment. Vice Chair, you do an amazing job keeping all of that in your brain and reviewing committee work. Regarding BizOp 2 with the 21st Century, when we were talking about the numbers, the actual number is from three, adjustment is from 300,000 to 400,000. You're welcome.
Thank you. That is very nice to sort of disguise that as a compliment, though.
Always a teacher.
Yes, always lead with the positive.
That goes down as your kindly act of the day.
Hey, I just didn't want us to approve a move from 400 to 500, so anyway, the treasurer here has keeped me straight on my money.
And I should say in that regard that our, our staff are very attuned to try to get the good stewards of these state's dollars. So a lot of work goes into these contracts in many instances to try to get the best reasonable deal. There have been several contracts that have come before this board that have been immensely lower than they would otherwise have been had it not been for the work of the staff, and the committee obviously has been extremely supportive of that work and very much attuned to it and is of the same mind. So I should compliment the staff in that regard as well.
Any other comments? Thank you. That concludes our committee reports. One last item, colleagues will remember yesterday in closed session, our General Counsel brought a recommendation to us regarding the hiring of an assistant attorney for our legal office, gentleman named Ryan Collins, who comes highly recommended with superb skills and experiences to perform this work, which is critical to our ability to serve our students. And so it will be on our action agenda for your consideration of approval of that hire. Ms. Shafer, anything to add to that? Okay. Any questions on that item? Very good. Then we'll now vote on any item requiring action from your reports. A thorough discussion and report was provided on each item, including any consent items. Reminder that any item on the consent agenda is primarily not complex and may have come to the board for discussion the prior month. I note also that board members have seen these consent agenda items for at least a week. Board members are reminded that it's our duty to avoid conflicts of interest. Let's see that. I think we've, we've put that statement into the record already, and we do have on the record that Lieutenant Governor Will Cuse himself from EICS 1, ALA Monroe vote. And from the EICS Committee, we will vote on EICS 1 separately. At this time, is the request, is there a request to remove any other items from the consent action or action on first reading items for separate vote? Hearing none, I ask for a motion to approve the following. The meeting minutes for the November 30th and December 1st, 2022 State Board of Education meeting, the meeting minutes for the special call, December 13th, 2022 meeting, SLA 2 and 3, EICS 2, HRS 1, GCA 1, BizOp 1 through 6, the limited license and initial professional license approval requests that we discussed in closed session, and then the recommendation for hiring of the assistant attorney for our legal office. Is there a motion to that effect? Motion by the treasurers, there's a second. Second by Mr. Hall. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Dr. Petrie-Martin?
Dr. Oxendine?
Yes.
Mrs. Camnitz?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Dr. Tipton Rogers?
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Blackburn?
Yes.
Dr. Ford?
Yes.
Treasurer Caldwell?
Yes.
Lieutenant Governor Robinson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Duncan?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes. Motion carries. We'll now proceed to EICS 1 and have two separate votes. The first vote will be the recommendation to approve the accelerated application for ALA Monroe. Motion by the treasurers, there's a second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Oxendine. Any discussion? Dr. Petrie-Martin?
Dr. Oxendine?
Yes.
Mrs. Camnitz? Mr. Keenan?
No.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Dr. Tipton Rogers? Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Blackburn?
No.
Dr. Ford?
No.
Treasurer Caldwell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Duncan?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Excuse me, I misvoted, excuse me, no.
Chair Davis?
So the motion fails six to, four to six. Next up is the EICS 1 concerning legacy classical.
Yes.
Is that the right term? Okay. Is there a motion to approve that accelerated application?
No approval.
Motion by Ms. White, is there a second?
So moved.
Second by Dr. Oxendine. Any discussion? Dr. Petrie-Martin?
Dr. Oxendine?
Yes.
Mrs. Camnitz?
No.
Mr. Keenan?
No.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Dr. Tipton Rogers? Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Blackburn?
Yes.
Dr. Ford?
No.
Treasurer Caldwell?
Yes.
Lieutenant Governor Robinson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Duncan?
No.
Chair Davis?
That motion carries six to five. That concludes our, our action items. We do have one other item before we close. It'll be a short one, I understand, and I'll turn to our teacher advisor, Ms. Cooper. I'm sorry, Kaper, excuse me. Thank you.
Carper.
It's cool.
Leah. Carper, my apologies.
Good morning, everybody. I am Leah Carper, your 2022 Burroughs Welcome Fund North Carolina Teacher of the Year. That is C-A-R-P-E-R.
Got it.
Ladies and gentlemen, it is School Board Appreciation Month. And we advisors would like to take a moment to just recognize the wonderful work that our North Carolina State Board of Education our North Carolina State Board of Education does to provide the best education possible for all of the 1.5 million public school children in North Carolina. It would be completely inappropriate for us to give you kisses, so we're just going to give you kind words and candy instead, okay?
So, thank you for the mounds of reading you do prepare for each meeting.
Thank you all for the work you do to ensure that Mike and Ike and all the students in North Carolina Public Schools are getting the best educational opportunities.
Thank you for working hard to ensure that all educators in North Carolina have a better
Thank you for being lifesavers for all of our students by ensuring they have durable skills when they leave North Carolina Public Schools.
And we really want to say thank you for going the extra mile for all of the 1.5 million children in North Carolina Public Schools.
Happy School Board Appreciation Month.
And this also includes our fellow advisor, Mr. Mercer. Please enjoy some of this lovely candy.
Wasn't that a sweet presentation?
Sorry, we couldn't give you $500,000.
The treasurer, the treasurer just beat us to it.
We were gonna do that. Yeah. That was lame.
It also was, just quickly, I think, it just shows the creativity of our way of thinking. And that's a prime example. It looks like a payday.
Makes you want to be in their classroom.
And that's what happens when you give us time, money to collaborate with one another. Just so you know, that's the time and money to collaborate with one another.
Mr. Treasurer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wrote that down. I should be leading with compliments, so it's something I've not done all my life, so I learned something today, so thank you very much. Just a couple of housekeeping things. Many of you saw the announcement yesterday about the State Health Plan of choosing a new third-party administrator two years from now. It's important for people to realize that Blue Cross has never been the insurer for the State Health Plan. They've always been the back office administrator. We have been yesterday, we are today, we will be tomorrow, a self-funded plan. All this contract does is it changes the third-party administration from Blue Cross to ADN, starting in 2025. So I just wanted to reduce all the anxiety about that. We continue to be a self-funded plan, and we will continue to be that in the future. Secondly, we often hear about, unfortunately, bad actors, not only in local government, but also in our school systems. We are having to apply the felony forfeiture law more than ever, and the reason I'm bringing this up to this board is that you can be our eyes and ears. We don't always have the ability to find out when somebody has done something bad within their public school responsibilities. We can't follow every court document across the state. Any of you who know of any cases that we need to be aware of as they're coming through the court system, just need to notify me. The way that this works, and by the way, we're doing felony forfeiture of people of all political parties, all genders and all races across North Carolina, unfortunately. The way that it works is that when you're convicted of a crime within your public service duty, once that conviction is handed down, and for whatever period of time that is, we go in and we remove your pension credit for those years of service. It's a very serious penalty. The most publicized one here locally, obviously, was the embezzling register of deeds in Wake County just a few years ago, but we've had many, many since then. So we appreciate any eyes and ears that y'all can give us, both here as board members and across, across the spectrum. Secondly, we continue to work on these payroll system issues. This is a very delicate matter. It's very concerning to me as the state treasurer that we've had so many problems with some of these smaller school districts when we're getting ready to roll out some very, very large school systems. We have nothing to do with this at the treasurer's office. We're not involved in the procurement, we're not the hub, we're not the spoke, we're not anything, except that when people's payroll is not right, it really puts especially our lower-income employees in a vortex, a financial vortex that they can't get out of. And it's just as bad to overpay someone it is to underpay somebody, because when you overpay somebody, then we have to recapture it, they have to budget for that, and that is a problem. And very lastly, those of you may have read recently that we had a very significant embezzlement of $1.4 million of a check that was made from the Cumberland, County of Cumberland, Cumberland County to the Fable Tech Community College, their monthly stipend. And somebody went into a bank, got ahold of that check, went into a bank, opened an account in the name of Fable Tech Community College for $1.4 million. And then ultimately, after that hold was released, I found out about this four months later, four months after that hold was released, we were, through my contacting Jamie Diamond at Chase Manhattan, we were able to get this money reimbursed. My point of saying that to you is that we all need to be diligent in all of our systems, not just with physical checks in the mail, but also whitewashing.
Yep.
We just had a $300 check from a small community that turned into a $20,000 check, where somebody got ahold of the check for $300 and whitewashed it, changed the payee, changed everything. And so I think we need to double down, especially in this world, to make sure that we're doing as much as we possibly can electronically. And in my next report, I'll try to lead with a compliment.
Thanks for your time.
Treasurer, thank you for your team's work, for your report, and for your service on this board. We appreciate it. I want to thank all staff at DPI and others who contributed and did the hard work to make this meeting such a success. Also want to wish our students, our educators, families, and stakeholders, and our community members a happy new year. Is there a motion that we adjourn? Motion by Mr. Blackburn, second by Mr. Keenan. Dr. Petrie Martin?
Dr. Oxendine?
Yes.
Mrs. Camnet?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Dr. Tipton Rogers? Mrs. White? Mr. Blackburn?
Yes.
Dr. Ford?
Yes.
Treasurer Falwell? Lieutenant Governor Robinson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Duncan?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes, and the treasurer has returned. Motion carries, we adjourn. Have a good day.
And I'm glad to know that all of the Bush, the great fraternity of half-bath aside.
Happy Father's Day.
Happy birthday to me and us. I've been here 122 years. And every field of music and dance, everybody.